This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Vader City Council. It's October 22nd. The time is 6:01 PM. Roll call.
Donna Rogers here. Jason Daly.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Samantha Westley.
Here.
Mayor Shaw.
Here. We have a full form. Ms. Rogers, do you need some of the leadings? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the Constitution, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Mayor's report. A little fall loop. The distributions are still continuing. Diane, do you know off the top of your head how much we've given out so far? Last I heard it was over 11,000, but I saw some more going out today.
I'll tell you later in the meeting.
Okay, well, that's fine. I know we were well over halfway there. So, that's great. Good feedback from that program. Some announcements that future budget public hearings are coming up. On November 12th, there'll be a public hearing on the preliminary budget. And then on the 3rd, December 3rd, there'll be the last final proposed budget public hearing. Council reports. Any reports from the council?
I have one. This is about the jail.
Okay.
I contacted.
Is anyone online here, Ms. Rogers?
She's a little soft.
For our number one. Okay, I contacted the historical assets. Okay, I contacted the Department of Urban Preservation. His name is Michael Hauser, and he's a state historian. And he's going to be sending the city a letter to let you know how you can get the jail on the historical registry. We actually want, but we are in the state inventory.
Interesting.
Yeah, but we can get on there and I've got three little names of associations that can get us grants to get that jail fixed, but in order to get those grants, we have to do something on the jail.
Got it.
So, and that's gotta be soon, something or this winter. I want to see that roof chart this winter. Just help stop that leaking in there around that chimney. We've got to do something now to at least put a patch on it to try and save it.
Diane wants to talk about that.
I was gonna tell you that John has been over and investigated. He's getting a testament on replacing the roof. But he looked at it and he thinks it might not be the whole roof, but that just in the eaves and around the chimney itself might be. So, he is working.
Yeah. It's been so many years since that roof has come down. It should be the whole roof.
Well, he said in the background, "Okay, all right." Well, that's good. Anyway, so, like I say, he'll be sending you a letter. So.
Great. We'll look for that.
I'll make contact with him and he's going to let us know how to get on the historical registry. So, that's my report.
So, anybody else? You want to turn online? Okay. Hearing other council reports. Agenda approval.
I'd like to make motion that we approve the city council meeting and agenda for 10/22/2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the agenda for October 27th. We have a second. Seceded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. We have a question from, yes.
Will we take these off when we're sitting down? I can't at the restaurant. Shut up. So, I can't, I'm six feet from anybody infectious. Are we allowed to take these off?
When you're in public, you're just supposed to have them on. Restaurants don't get a bye because they can't eat with the mask on.
I can eat something. I have candy in my purse. We can't take them off now.
You're not supposed to take them off inside, just like a store. Just playing by the rules. Minutes approval. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting on December or October 8th, 2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the minutes for October 8th, 2020. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seceded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion?
Yes, I cannot go wrong because I didn't pick a topic.
Oh. What happened there?
I have no idea. I didn't pick a topic.
Okay, sorry about that. We'll try to do better next time.
Well, I'm gonna say, I know we have those two more than five, if you know what I mean. And I didn't, then we can vote on next week.
Would we?
Well, my final vote is to no vote. Who doesn't? Or yet.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys.
Okay. If you have a final issue, make sure you let us know. All right, we have a first, we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes for October 8th, 2020, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. With that, we'll note that Ms. Rogers did not vote. Voucher approval. Any motions for the vouchers?
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the end of October for $29,023.08 for the October total of $50,838.75.
A motion by Mr. Daly to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seceded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we do not have any special reports tonight. Moving on to city business. Item number one, the public hearing on revenue and property taxes for 2021 budget preparation. As you're all aware, we'll need a.
I'll make a motion.
And second, to open the public hearing for a proposed amount of time. And we will open the public hearing for that amount of time.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for the revenue and property taxes for the 2021 budget preparation for 10 minutes or as needed.
We have a motion by Mr. Bailey to open the revenue and property tax public hearing for 10 minutes or as needed. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I'm gonna drive Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Right, I open this public hearing at 6:11 PM. Who would like to start speaking? Members of the public?
I would.
Ms. Costello.
Yes. I was only given the revenue, and I was wondering why are we doing that in separates this year?
Speak to that, Diane.
We're only addressing the revenue tonight.
Oh.
Yep, this is our revenue.
Am I, Joe, am I still there?
You're still here. I wasn't sure if you were done or if, I don't.
Oh, oh, no, I've just begun. No, I've just begun.
Okay, you go on, please.
Okay, I've just begun. I'm gonna start on page one, and there were so many things in the revenue. And I know this is just to question if there's, in order to help Diane to see some different spots. And I question page one, line item telephone franchise fee, where in the past we have received, and yet we have zero in year-to-date and zero in 2021. I also, I also. I wanted to just take the note of this and then I'll just stop and maybe.
Okay, are you ready for that, the telephone franchise fees to be addressed? Diane does have an answer for you.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
Okay, yes, I do have that highlighted on my copy as well. In the past, CenturyLink paid us a franchise fee, which I do believe they're still due to pay us, but they changed accounting firms this last year, and they have not been paying. I contacted the accounting firm and they said, you know, as far as they know, they're paying what they're supposed to be paying. I'm not satisfied with that answer, so I'm gonna go to CenturyLink themselves in our original contract and find out why we're not getting that money.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. That would make sense. On page, let's see. On page, on page two, I know that the US, at the US Cellular lease is like, isn't that a flat rate? How do we come up with 6,750 and 8,000 as a 2021 proposal?
Okay, currently, we have received $6,049. They pay every month, and we had at that point not gotten payment. It looks like they're still due for October, November, December payments. And so, when you add those up, there's $679 each, you get to the 8,000. Close to it.
Okay. My next question would be, it's still on page two, but it's at the top, and it's planning, zoning, and subdivision. Why would we put the $10,000 received in revenue?
Because we did receive that much in revenue.
But aren't those, aren't those folks like the planning people, aren't they actually expenditures? They're not really revenue.
Actually, they're both. We pay our planning official and the attorney for planning services, but when people get building permits, part of their payout to us has to do with, for example, boundary line adjustment, which is the BLA. We receive money for that. There was other zoning things. Let's see, what was it? A variance, yes. We received money for variance. Those kind of things go into that line.
Okay. If you could look at page three. I do not know what the transportation one is under the TIB grant. Does that have to do with the jail?
No, that has.
What is that?
Sorry. It had to do with the grant that we received to do H Street.
Below that, Diane, is that still?
We know that. That grant closed in 2019.
Okay, well, the line item just below it.
Okay, the multi-modal transportation.
Yes, what is that?
Okay, that's an allotment we get from the state that comes out of the taxes they receive, sales taxes, and they divide it into all those line items below that. We get a percentage of all of that.
Okay. Okay, and probably one of my, one of my last comments, and I'll give somebody else a chance, is on the park funds on page three. Why are we putting the new grant in there when we don't actually have it?
Well, it's, again, this is a proposed budget, but we believe that we're needing to get that grant. I saw paperwork actually today about a meeting they were having, and we listed all that list there. So, we're like 90% sure we're getting it, so we include it in there.
It appears to be blue sky, though, when you put it on a budget. It, you know, it just looks like we have a lot of money that we don't have, was kind of my question. I didn't realize that you were allowed to put potential funds coming in like a grant. So, you know, anything can happen on that. On page number four.
Can I just give you another point about the grant?
Pardon?
Even if we do include it in the budget and we don't get the grant, on the expenditure side, there will not be anything spent without the grant.
Well, again, I didn't, again, I don't see the expenditure side, so I have no way to balance this out.
Right.
On sewer, on page four on sewer sales, I only have two ways I can look at that. You've got a $50,000 difference going on from year-to-date, which I know there's still a couple thousand will come in before the end of the year. However, there's about, I don't know, 50,000, and I can only look at that two ways. Either our sewer rates are going up, or there's going to be approximately 37 new homes built in Vader. Am I close? What, the numbers seem awfully large.
As far as the amount we received, that is as of, well, yesterday. And then we have another billing cycle that will be coming, and that will be received by December. But then they changed the billing cycle last year, and so the next time we'll get paid will be in January for the months of November, December. So, that's why.
Oh, and that'll be, then you'll roll that over into this last year to 2020?
No, the money will, well, if it's received by January 10th, I think it is, it will go into December.
On, and my very last question, on page four, under the sewer capital reserve and the equipment replacement reserve. In 2019, it appears there was no money put in there. And then again, in 2021, it doesn't appear that we're going to put any money in there. Is there reason for that?
Well, because we're going to be spending money on our new sewer plant, and so we decided we didn't need to put it away if we're gonna be spending it the same year when the plant comes in.
Okay, what happened to the $75,000 that's sitting in there and the $30,000?
It's still there.
And will, will it have to stay in the sewer department?
It will stay in the sewer department, yes.
Okay. For some reason, I thought that equipment replacement was for, we were, as I recall, we were supposed to be putting money aside for the tractor, a new track hoe, or whatever should break down. And I didn't, I don't, I didn't see anywhere. Of course, like I said, I don't have expenditures, but.
That's actually.
That was one of my.
It's in the street budget. We have tractor repair and that kind of thing. This has to do with more like the sewer plant itself.
Okay. All right, I hand my time over to someone else. Thank you.
You did good questions.
Yeah, definitely good questions. Dr. Clark, you had some.
I do. Mike, I want to start out with asking, what's your goal in separating the revenue portion of the public hearing from the expenses portion of the public hearing? Because honestly, this is a Pollyanna report. This says, hey, we have a lot of money, but you're not gonna tell us how you're gonna spend it or how you want us to spend it. And so, just to tell us half the story, you might as well, you know, it's just blowing sunshine. And my comment is, you want input from the public, but you're not giving us the whole story. You're giving us half of it. So, it's great to look down these items, say, wow, we have a lot of money coming in, and that's wonderful, but you're not telling us how much you're spending. So, if you take it in $230,000, and that's your general fund that you expect for 2021, is our budget 250? You know, so how can we have input on something like that? I have, I have nothing. What?
There was some background.
Oh, so that was my first thing. Why would you separate the two? And my second question is on some individual items that you have here on the paper.
Okay. And to answer the first question, I believe that you're thinking that we are farther down the road than we are. Right now, it's our very first hearing, and it is specifically to talk about property taxes. You know, what do you feel about the property taxes? Should we raise them? Should we not raise them? Are they enough? And so, you have the list of income there, so you can look and go, are we gonna have as much as we did before? And then after that, the next step in the process for the budget is to look at the expenditure. But we're not there yet. So, today is just looking at the money coming in, and what does that have to do with taxes?
Well, the problem is just revenue and taxes. So, for you to say, do we have enough money coming in? We have no idea because we don't know what you plan on spending. So, it, for the public, that's like my husband saying, hey, we used to have a million dollars, but I don't realize we're gonna spend a million on a house or stupid pieces of equipment.
Right. We're not making a decision about spending money right now. We're only making a decision about taxes today. They're, they're looking at the taxes. They're not making a decision yet.
There's no decision. Taking, taking input from the public, information that we have up to this point, so that going forward later on, we can continue to make educated decisions. That's why there's more public hearings that will address rent expenditures and levies. So, this is just one of the many opportunities the public has to give input to council.
Well, then my other comments then are on individual items. One is on, we have a lot of money hanging out on sewer collection fees, sewer late fees. $1,300 of all we've collected. We have people who willfully did not pay the sewer bill and willfully continue not to pay it. Or they give us some minor amount that'll take them 52 years to pay off. And are we putting liens on our houses? Do we have liens on every single one of the houses? Are we going after just five, 10, 50 bucks a month?
So, this year, for since March, since the governor's proclamation with COVID, we are unable to do quite a lot of things when it comes to late fee fees and foreclosures and things like that.
I didn't mean that. You can't put a lien on someone's house.
Right, there are, there are some liens already outstanding, and just recently, we collected some money on an old one.
Right. Okay, so. So, yeah, the process is, once they reach a certain level of lateness, we do place a lien on the property. And we are sending some to collection. We're not charging extra fees because the governor said we cannot charge extra fees. We're working closely with our collection company to help us with that. We have probably five to seven people who have outstanding bills of thousands of dollars.
Right.
And they're just holding, they're just stomp their foot, I'm not paying it. And so, we do have liens on all those properties.
So, my suggestion would be to go more aggressively after those people who either aren't paying anything or are paying such a small amount that one of us, that we're all gonna die before it ever gets paid off. So, that was just a suggestion on the, because I think it wasn't like $20,000.
Yeah, I actually.
It was talking about 40.
Started working with the city staff. This is kind of outside the scope of this, but I would, right as COVID was starting, I started working with the city staff on a procedure for being very aggressive and taking a stand off those, on those late, the late payers or never payers, I guess it's what you call never payers. However, that whole process got stopped almost before it got started because of COVID and the government, governor's proclamation. So, it's, it's, it needs to happen. It's going to happen as soon as we're able to take action legally.
So, on the taxes, a couple of years ago, when you guys told us this bill goes on the tax rate, you said, well, it's only, hey, it's only $10 a house, you know, on average. You only have to roll and raise it to $10, and it's not a big deal, and we should all go over this. Can't we all just add $10 a month? And, and we're doing fine with that. So, why would you want to lower it now when we have more houses coming in and we have, that just gives us that much more money in order to fix the jail, which you've done nothing to, or actually do something for the parks? I've seen the budget for last year and, you know, what you've actually spent this year, not even anything for the parks. Nothing. I mean, other than maybe moldy brass. People eat that park almost every day in the summertime, especially in the park. And I see, you know, I'm not filming that, the other one, all the time. So, you know, those are where we should.
Isn't the park worth it too?
Yeah, so that's where I would like to see some money. I don't see any money going, you know, to fix the jail. I don't see any money going to do things that actually help everyday people. You know, it's all fine and good that, you know, people get wages and you're paying the attorneys some amount of money, but I'd like to see roads fixed, and I don't see a whole lot of money, you know, being spent on actual roads. Like 400 something. So, as for the property tax, leave it where it's at. No one's dying, no one's struggling to pay it. And what you guys told us, at least three of you, told us when you set this up three years ago, it's only pennies. Only pennies a day.
You're right, yeah. I think it added up to $100 a year or something.
Our analogy was a few rolls of paper or something like that.
It was not, it was.
So, I don't think you're lowering the budget where it was.
You know, I will, I will say that property assessments have gone up like crazy, so taxes are gonna be higher this year.
Yeah, I got it.
From the app.
That's true, and there are, there are a dozen or so probably new homes going in right now, and more, and more coming. There are more coming, and so, there's gonna be all kinds of new connections and property taxes. Now, along this line, and it hasn't been, I don't know if it's been discussed with council, but the input that we've gotten from county or state, that we are, we should expect lower than last year's revenues from, from the state and county organizations because of COVID-related issues. And so, we're gonna need to adjust our budget accordingly. Diane, would you like to speak, speak to that for council? Could be a good time to discuss that.
The Economist gave a report to the state, which they funneled down to us. They're anticipating that within two years from now, this will be affected by people who are not working now, not being able to pay their taxes, and they're anticipating it might be as much as 20%. And they're anticipating it might be as much as 20% less by that time. So I don't know where their benchmark is, but if we look at what we got this year and adjust it down, we may be looking at a cut. But again, we may be offset because of all the new building that's happening, and also we have not heard from the census people about our per capita here, which a lot of things are paid by that. So if our, you know, population increases, then we're going to get more as that. So there's a couple of good things that are coming our way. We just don't have all the information yet.
I have one more comment. On the sewer sale, does that include, because you guys had like a three or five year plan on bringing in sewer. Does that number 2021 budget, which is actually lower than this year, how did that go down? The budget last year for sewer sales was $45, the proposed budget is 190.
Right, again, because we don't know how it's going to go with people not working there, they're going to pay their bills. We can bill, but if it's where it's not income to us, so I didn't want to judge more than we might expect. It's always great if we get more, but I don't want to inflate numbers.
So aren't you raising the rate though again?
No.
Wasn't it like three years or something in a row that you had to raise something?
Right, so to, we had to meet a certain income threshold, it was like an income threshold to utility fees, some type of a metric that folks wanted so that we could meet our, meet these criteria for the grants for that we have gotten now. And so we're, we know that we're at the thresholds we needed for utility rates for those grants, and so we've granted them. So we can base our utility fees on our actual expenditures now and not just increase them to try to meet some benchmark.
So you don't have to increase rates to something you want 21?
No, it's not what we're expecting. Any other comments from the public during this public hearing? I'll ask a second time, is there any other comments from the public? All right, hearing none, I am going to close this public hearing at 6:33 PM. Right. Do we need a motion to close the public hearing? I can't remember. Have you done that in the past? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to close the public hearing. You have a second?
I'll take it.
Second, Mr. Daly. Any discussion?
Does the council get to comment on any of this?
Yes, it's in the next section. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Now I'll close the public hearing at 6:30 PM. Want to make sure we're staying, staying by the book here. Okay, moving on, if I can find my agenda here. All right. Item number two on city business council to discuss the 2021 budget and property tax. This will be an opportunity for council to discuss what we've just heard, or anything else on the budget. As you all have had some of the documents already, you looked at them and had input to our corporate treasurer or myself. This would be a great opportunity to give it, of course, even outside of the council meeting, if you have any input, please relay it to City of all as soon as possible. Open the floor to the council to, for discussion.
Well, I noticed that that's a property value from the county way up for about everybody.
You said debt to property value? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I know, I noticed, yeah, I've got mine in the mail, and property values are, I think, way up from 2020.
Those little slips that we get in the mail that says that magically went up in value $25,000. Yeah. Yep, and that's a good, you know, personally, I look at it as, it's bad because I have to pay that money, right? But on the good side, the city does get some of, some of that increase that we'll see, so.
No, I was just, I was just putting it out there because, you know, it might be in consideration not to ask for higher tax levy, maybe even reduce it possibly.
Right, yeah, and discussing with Diane, our, the really, really estimates, we don't see any reason that we would need to ask for a property tax increase this year.
That's good.
What is the current rate? The 78% on 75? What's the appropriate?
That is in my other paperwork, I don't have that. It's.
I think part is 1%.
Well, it's.
Are we taxed 78% or changed to 75%?
Or you're talking about a percentage that, are you trying to lower it? Or are you trying to keep the same?
I mean, this is not a decision-making process at the moment, but.
I was talking about lowering it back because when we, a couple of years ago, when we did the coloration, we said that we were going, then the next year it was, well, we can use it to take care of this. But we didn't raise it, we just kept it, and I, I know that we said that we were going to lower it, and that happened. And so that's what I'd like to do, is to be on our word.
So how can we lower it then?
Yes, absolutely, comment.
That's, you were for keeping it that last year, you said, yeah, let's keep it because we have a goal to use it for wherever it was you want to use it, and it wasn't that much money. I think it was you who was laughing over here, said how much it was. It wasn't thousands and tens of thousands of dollars. So it wasn't you, I think it was you.
Yeah, I'm sure it was me, and you're right, the amount of money it was, when I say it's hard, you know, just speaking for myself, you know, it was a few dollars, you know.
So my point would be, we could use that to fix the jail, or we could use that for the parks, or we could use it for something that actually benefits everyday ordinary humans that live here. Instead of a new computer, or a new desk, or a chair or something, you know, target something that will benefit the individual peoples. Because we're not, we're talking a couple thousand dollars or.
Well, that's what we did, that's what we did originally when we raised it.
For codification.
For codification, which helps everybody. So, I mean, if there is something else that we're requisite for, I don't know, it's that big of a deal, but, I mean, you're talking, they say, oh, once the taxes never comes back down, and.
And you're seeing that again right now, obviously you're seeing it right now, I mean, we have, again, there's always a reason why. Yeah, we're looking at into next year, and the year after, expecting perhaps revenue decrease because of COVID-related issues. And here we are, and we have another reason, well, let's not decrease it, but you're right.
To me, there's not a real reason for it besides, that was my word that I said.
Well, you could.
It was all before COVID-19.
Yeah, and, and you bring up jail, Don, where we might be able to get grants and stuff. So that's going to be able to do that. Park board, park board, we're talking with grants.
Yes, it does take a long time, that jail doesn't have a long time. That's what I'm saying, that jail is in bad shape and it needs some immediate help.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm hoping through this budget process, you know, as we get towards the end of it, we'll be able to say, hey, look, we've got, let's take 20 or $30,000, you know, something, whatever it is, and let's do this with it, and if it's the jail, then so be it. But I would like to see that kind of budget going into 2021, where we say, we have this thing, we're going to do, and we're going to make it happen. Because a lot of times, we haven't done that in the past. We've had little things, we've done codification, which is absolutely wonderful. I mean, just today, I had an attorney that I had never talked to before say that he used it, and it was, he was excited that it was available immediately to him. And so it's been a great, great thing to have. And I think before that, the city, I remember the carpeting year, the council had saved money for many years to make the carpet happen. So we've done things like that before during the budget cycle, and I'd like to see something like that again this year.
Well, you know, and I'm not just bashing this council, but I've been here 33 years. And the only thing that's ever been done to that jail is some paint once in a while, and volunteers in the community, ah, gosh, Mr. Smith, Reggie, helped shore up the foundation so that we could use it. I mean, that is sickening to watch. People go here in the summertime, and a lot of people who run to that park, use the bathroom, and they're always up there looking in the window, and it is embarrassing. Those people are coming to this town and see, that is our only historical thing we have, and it is a draw. See them looking there and see how trashy and how ill-equipped it is. I mean, that, there's no, I can't find an excuse for that, I really can't. And it's gone on for years, and it needs, it's down to the last leg, I think, in my opinion, something's got to be done to save it. And I never heard the park board talk about it. It's like, that jail doesn't exist. So there's just no plan, there is no plan for that jail, and there needs to be one.
You have a comment from Ms. Redcliffe?
Do we know the numbers, the differences between the two different rates? Do you want to lower it to what? And, and what would be the difference between what you want to lower it to and what we're getting now? I mean, how much, for households, it would be helpful for the community to have input if we knew, are we talking $5,000, $10,000, or are we talking?
I think what we're doing is 4%.
Yeah, that's the cap. Well, I remember one time we only raised it like 0.4% or something like that, you know.
So how much would you have to lower it for?
I can't remember.
That's what we said.
And what is that?
To give it back. I don't remember what exactly it was. I will have to look it up, but it wasn't, it took two years to pay for.
Yeah, but now with, with the, with the new findings about the budget deficits in two years, you know, that whole desire to lower it is on the back burner, you know.
Yeah, I think, you know, just to estimate on the high end, if you, if you said we collected an extra $1,500 a year in property taxes because of it, which is probably about right, because you figured codification was about, I think it was about 5,500.
It was like $10,000.
It wasn't that much, but.
What was it, Diane?
Nine.
Eight, eight thousand. And we did it for three years.
Is that the refund you're talking about?
The what?
The refund.
Yeah, so if, so let's say we, this number sounds really high to me. If we collected an extra $2,600 a year in property taxes, which I don't think it was that much, it wasn't that much.
I don't remember, like a 1,200.
Yeah, it was a lot less. Even if it was that, you divide that by 220 households, is $12 a year. A dollar a month household is what that property tax was roughly.
And that's what you want to lower it to?
And I, yeah, I, whatever it was that we took, that we said we were going to lower it back down, and everybody said, no, you're never going to do it, blah, blah, blah.
And you didn't, you couldn't, you didn't.
Yeah, because something else came up, and, and that bugged me. I mean, I did it, but it bugged me, and to me, it's a thing of honesty, that, you know, this is what we said, but this is, here it is, we give it back, and we won't lose it because it'll still be there to collect. We would lose it for that year, but we'd be able to raise it again if we needed to, because we get a certain amount a year to raise it, so it would go back in the bank, basically.
Yeah, but if in two years, we're going to have a dump, and a bunch of people aren't going to pay their taxes, and that's the year you want to raise it, then the only people that are going to pay it are Laker and I and U5, you know, we, so. You know, well, that's, that's the way, raise it two years, start leaving, raise it now. We have the houses, extra houses coming in, and then put it in the bank or something. How lucky people can save anything, but you're allowed to, but decide for that time when, well, um, doesn't. Or do something in the parks, or do something for the debt.
Well, certainly go into just refund, that's what that is, that's like a savings account, just for anything in the town. We don't have a lot of apparently money to just go borrow it somewhere and go fix something, but apparently we don't. It doesn't seem like full on money, but people are paying, if you say $12 a year. I mean, probably take the beer cost more than that.
Dollar a month, I mean. I hate to say that a dollar a month is a lot of money, but for some people, maybe it is, but a lot of other things are more than a dollar a month. But I do, I do understand what Mr. Parsons is saying too. Said one thing, and it is a noble thing to try to stick to your word on that.
Well, when is there any other extra money laying around? It could be like a savings account set aside for, for just different things that we need done and studied.
And we could, there was a year, there've been a few years where we've got the money aside for carpet, they just save, 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 because they got carpet, it was possible. But yeah, as we get closer to the, you know, the next, next public hearing with the revenue, the expenditures is, and we get some even better estimates, we'll really have a better handle on what we're going to be able to do.
Has anybody got an idea what it would take to, you know, it's probably pushing on the roof, just to turn it up.
Right, so we're getting those estimates on the roof right now, on that. The foundation, we had gotten an estimate a couple of years ago, and, but it, I don't know if I trust that estimate. So it would be better to get some, get some other ideas. Any other discussion on the? Yeah.
I don't know anything about, I'm not quite sure what it means, but I see the year-to-date for water utility tax. Twenty, the year-to-date is $4,000, something, for 2021, it's gone up to $12,000. How, how is that?
This will be on page one?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Page one, it's roughly the seventh item down.
Well, yeah, Donna, remember we talked about before that the county owes us money for water access tax, they have not paid yet, and when I.
We didn't talk about that.
Well.
I don't remember talking about that.
We talked about it, but it's probably hard for you to hear.
Yeah, I don't always catch all of it, and then my mind's going to the next one ahead.
Okay, so they have not paid us, I believe, since April, and so I contacted them and said, you know, we need this money. They said it was an oversight and that they would be taking care of it, but we haven't gotten any yet.
And that goes for this sewer utility tax, and I take it to the.
Well, sewer utility tax comes from us.
Okay, so that's, oh, that's going down as compared, oh, that's the budget though, but I guess it's going up a little bit, but not much, so, okay. oh, that's going down as compared, oh, that's budgeted, but I guess it's going up a little bit, but not much, so, okay. And the, um, the BP permit fees, that's the building department, are we talking about? So, uh, that's going down to fifteen thousand on the permit fees? Is this just like a dollar estimates that you're doing? Okay, and then, um, okay, that's correct. I have no idea what the city's assistance means.
That's one of the line items that we get from the state, from sales tax they collect.
Okay, so that's gonna be at eighteen thousand, you're estimating. And then I have, down at the bottom, we have BP Inspection Service. Uh, year-to-date is two-hundred-and-ten dollars, and then you've got it going up to four thousand for twenty-one?
Uh, well, if you look at the line below it.
Yeah, I know, and it kind of seems opposite on that.
And you put those two lines together, I went and looked at that today to see, it looks like maybe they didn't all get coded into the right line item. But essentially, the two of those together is what you'd be comparing. And I'll, I'll do some more cleanup on all that, until we get to the right part.
It's just, I don't know, I'm sorry, and then, um, I think somebody mentioned the US salvage. It's got, it's got going up, you figure to eight thousand. Castor Fund. On page two.
Oh, yeah, right.
No clue what it has.
Okay, okay. It's fair, we receive it, and then it goes to someone else. So we receive it, and then we mail out it to, to the other.
Moving on, all right.
And last year, I'm not sure why it was so high, but it's not, at all. If you see this year. No, they're their own kind of master account, the grants are.
Okay, so then I have one about on, um, page three. Transfer into the street fund. Um, for twenty-twenty, it's thirteen thousand, three hundred, but there's nothing here. What is that about?
That is a decision that you guys have to make. Do you want to transfer money into the street fund? If you look at the street fund, um, it, it always, it seems underfunded. And so for the budget last year, if you look at that, and then looking next year, we're even looking at twenty-seven thousand. Um, and that's without anything being transferred in. On the other side, on the expenditure, which is not there right now, we're going to need more than twenty-seven thousand dollars to operate the street fund.
Okay, so what are we doing with the street fund? Is that actually fixed street fund or?
It does things like fix street, it also pays the John's salary, pays for the tractor, the truck.
The street lights coming out of that?
Street lights.
I see that, that power bill for the street lights.
The garage, the garage, that kind of stuff. All funneled through the street fund.
Didn't we get that scraper with the street fund?
The scraper was not budgeted, so we took it out of the current fund, which we had surplus money there, and we could do that by a budget amendment. Um, but again, part of it came from there, because we had money allotted for, um, snow removal equipment, as it said, so we used that money for part of the.
Okay, my next question, we're into the park fund now. The RCO, but I'm kind of confused between the, what the refund, we're gonna have fifteen thousand. And up here, uh, you're saying we're gonna have seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars out of matching funds from REIT? Where, how's that gonna progress up to seventy thousand dollars from?
Okay, the refund is, money just keeps getting put into. Currently, it is almost eighty thousand dollars right now.
Why didn't it say that year?
Because this is only talking about the money that's gonna come in this year, and any money that's been spent out, so. It's coming in, you know, every month we get some, and it goes into that savings account, so to speak. And it can only be used for capital expenditures. And so it sits there until we decide we have a project we're gonna spend it on, and this is part of what we could use for matching funds for our grant. So we get fully funded, I think it's four hundred and thirty-three thousand when we do the matching.
So this, this could have been spent on the jail.
There's still more money that's not being used.
No, but I mean, years ago, this could have been spent on the jail.
Yes.
Yes.
We have a comment from Ms. Radcliffe?
You have eighty thousand dollars approximately in the refund, and you want to spend seventy on the match for playground equipment in the park for small people?
Have you, have you seen the, the presentation from the park board?
Well, I don't care if it's in. You have buildings that need a roof, you know, my dad built this thirty years ago. It's gonna need a roof. The old shop is gonna need maintenance, the jail needs maintenance. And, I mean, kids, hey, they get to play outside, but, you know, seventy thou, seventy thousand dollars out of an eighty thousand dollar fund?
Wait a minute, like, half an hour ago, you were saying, spend money in the parks, spend money in the parks, now we want to spend money in the parks?
So for many years now, for many years, the park board has always been told from the council and the mayor, through, through this process, the refunds are yours, the refunds are yours, the refunds are yours.
They lie.
They kudoite. Everyone lied. And so the park board has finally got out of their way to figure out a way to maximize that money by taking that money and getting, it's a twenty-five percent match, so if they put in ninety, or eighty, or seventy, or whatever, they get it times four. And so they've done their work. They're gonna be able to get their, their money, and they're gonna turn Word and Park into something that's gonna make people want to move here.
We don't have, we are getting the jail fixed to move here too, and I mean,
You just do that too.
But I'm saying, this is here, and the park board has never opened their mouth about that jail.
Oh, that's not very, very.
It's mentioned and then it's gone on.
Besides, I had a whole plan on moving the jail, and using a whole new foundation and all of that when I was on the park board, but then the city council, uh, what happened?
Now, that jail should never be.
You're right, and there are many issues in town besides just the jail. Um, but, but, and, and the council needs to focus on all of them at once.
Okay, let's please.
Well, I'm gonna focus on the jail, because it should be focused on, it should have been focused on years ago, and I'm not gonna start.
It pleases me that we haven't advocated the jail.
Um, why is your tack?
Don't they, I think, have swings?
Actually, have you looked at those swings?
Yeah, they're, they're from the Vader grades.
Nope, they're, they're literally T-posts welded together.
It all came from a school, when they opened the school, and all were donated, the whole.
Yeah, they, they cut them off the, the ground, and then they put them in the ground, and now they're almost too short to even swing on, so.
Then the supports on our T, like fencing T-posts, that somebody bubble gum welded them together up there, and
No, I'm, I'm excited about what the park board's doing, you know?
Well, I'm glad for what the park board is doing. I'm just not happy that the jail has been ignored for years and years and years and years. And that's every park board, not just this one.
I think.
And knowing that that money was in there, and years ago, before anybody came up with this idea to get this grant for the park, it sat there, and the jail's running. Excuse me, I have a problem with that.
Let me encourage you, that this is the budget season where you can really make a difference in the city by making decisions like this. Where do we want our money to go? And I'm sorry that they made, you think, we can make that change now.
I hope we do, because I want to see that jail saved. That, that is, that is such a historical thing for Vader. Jesus, all we got left hardly, as far as history's going. And it means quite a lot to the state if we save, save. Yeah, we're impressed that somebody finally called about it, but they've been down here.
Great. Um, let's try to get back on, a little bit back on the productive here. Is there any other discussion on the budget this time? I'm sure that this, this item is on every council meeting between here and, um, when we finally vote on it, um, so any new insights could be shared and progress can can be made. We have another comment from Ms. Radcliffe?
Um, on, on this expenditure action that I received tonight, um, it said that for repair, maintenance, buildings and equipment, so far, the sheer quarter fifty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents, I would like to see a little bit more money put toward maintenance. I know how old this building is, I know how old the city shop is. It's gonna need some serious maintenance coming up. My other question is, um, no offense, Diane, but I have some serious concerns about some of these numbers. Uh, even, and my favorite topic is attorney's fees. Everybody knows that. I don't like to spend so much money. We spent almost twenty thousand so far this year, and we're not done yet. And these numbers, even if you add the sewer and the general and the code enforcement, they don't add up to the fifteen thousand, whatever we spent on attorneys so far this year. And so I, my question is, I'm not real confident in these numbers. Um, I don't know where they come from, or if they're general, or they're just, you know, they're not actuals. But, um, they don't seem to reflect what we've actually paid out. For instance, I know that the building inspector, you know, his bills, well, the last one was like eleven hundred bucks, or twelve hundred bucks or something. And yet, you look down there, some of these, uh, what we paid out for the building inspector, they don't add up. They, they're not, they're not as high as you think they would be, considering how much we've been paying them. So I have some concerns about these numbers.
Well, I also do, because, um, the attorney bill, two days, January to October, is nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Local planning guy is for eight months, and he's five thousand, nine forty-three. Townsend for nine months is eight thousand, four hundred and seven twenty-two. And for twenty-twenty-one, for the attorney, um, just for the city stuff, you've got in there only thirteen thousand, five hundred. And, um, these attorney fees are just adding up.
Um, the attorney fees are not just for general attorney costs.
No, add them all together.
Yeah, some are for code enforcement, some where she reviews documents for wastewater treatment plant, some are for code enforcement, I said that. Um, and also some, she reviews the planning documents. And, you know, recently, we just reviewed the sewer. So her, her bill was spaced out over all those different things. That's why it's not just in one thing. And Donna, we have a thirteen thousand, five hundred in the general fund. We also have another, I believe, item, that's in sewer.
Thirty-three thousand dollars or something that you're gonna spend for something else, though. I think it's in the sewer fund or something like that.
And then also keep in mind, when you see some of these, you know, you're looking at expenditure, right, and you see city planner, five thousand dollars. Right, the city paid that. But where did that money come from in the revenue? The, a lot of the shoreline master plan stuff that Mr. Cooper is working on for us, it's grant funded. So the revenue is a grant. It, it looks like an expenditure out of the city coffers, but the money was free money. And so you don't just, you don't.
When I looked at his bill, I did not add up the grant.
Okay, just, just for example. So this doesn't, this doesn't tell you the whole story about where the money came from.
No, the attorney bill forgot rates, of course, I'm concerned. And I tired of seeing towns name, possibly the attorney. Everybody in their own home gets to talk to the attorney. That should be going through you.
Sometimes I am not the, the, the building official that needs to talk to the park. If, for instance, in a case of a, of a, um,
Land use issue.
A land use issue, um, uh, uh, in this case, there's appeal going on in the city right now for a building permit issue. Um, and the attorney needs to represent us in this, in this hearings examiner issue. She needs to collect the information from all the parties involved, which includes our building official. And so she does need to talk to him.
Well, well, I'm looking at Townes' bill. On his bill, not only paying the attorney fees for him to do that, we're paying him to talk to the attorney also.
It's unfortunate, but that's the way it works.
Uh, doesn't he know his job? I mean, do we have to pay the attorney for him to know codes are, and how like?
If our attorney is gonna talk.
And him to do research?
If our attorney is gonna talk to him about city of Vader issues, he is gonna charge the city of Vader to talk about city of Vader issues. So yes, we need to talk, we need to pay both parties.
This is too much money to be putting out. I mean, most of our, most of it goes out to attorney. And his planner, and his
Business.
Local guy, Townes.
I, I can, I can sympathize that paying for paperwork is
Well, when you're paying twice for it, I think that's a little wrong. He's asking for information. I don't know why we should pay him to know his job instead of paying the attorney ticket. And then, then she talks to you about the same thing, and there's another piece of money, and then she talks to him about the same thing. And here we go again. This is, this is ridiculous to me. I, I don't. There isn't a city around us that spends this much money on attorney fees.
We have a, Ms. Radcliffe?
I do happen to agree that we paid the attorney too much money, and some of these should be resolved in-house. But regardless, um, onto the building permit, are we raising the building permit fees? Because right now, um, I don't care how you do the math, we're losing money on every single permit. Um, based on what it costs us to actually pay that guy to do whatever he does, and then the guy to come down and inspect it, or whatever, we're losing money. And I think he's too expensive. You ought to get somebody local, refuse to do that. So if you're not gonna do that, stop losing money on these permits. I showed you that math three years ago, and then somebody had an aha moment, three months ago, said, oh, yeah, we're losing money on these permits. So you're going to either raise fees or find somebody who does less.
Right, the plan, there is, yes, the planning committee is also already working on that, and they, they're starting to put together a plan to have like a, a new, like fee schedule that the city council can adopt. And they're comparing actuals, actual expenses to, um, what we're charging, and they're comparing it with other municipalities, make sure that we're not off base. And so it's, it's, it's in progress. There, there's an active plan right now.
Well, then could you also ask somebody in for education? Because if you're gonna run at the time, please send, what's her name?
Stephanie.
Stephanie, please, Stephanie, to a, because not, this is not a slam. Um, she needs some education on, on building and running a, a building. And it's a whole other world, and if, if she's not, she doesn't have the basic terminology down, and she doesn't have, um, you know, know how others run it, maybe send her to a class, a couple workshops, send her up to Chelis, I see a bunch of them. Just to give her some background on it, um, because I know that, you know, it's.
It's good input. I think, I think you're right. I mean, everything is, it's a, it's a big process for everybody involved, and, and we rely on our, our paid experts, but it's good to have more, more expertise in-house.
Well, she's never had expertise before, and she just started doing them, and she's having no training, really. She's learning on her own, as you go. Somebody out there has to pay for it.
And that's why we're, we rely heavily on our experts right now. Um, let's get, kind of, we're kind of off track a little bit on, on CI, city council, city business item number two, council to discuss the question. Do we want to continue this discussion right now, or do we want to continue it at a later date? Because it will be more time before any final discussion. Oh, yeah.
Kenny, are you good with that?
We have a discussion on, on the budget and property tax levy. This is the council section, not the public. Council, last opportunity, and we'll move on to city business number three. Okay, hearing another discussion, make sure this is on the agenda next meeting, so we can continue, uh, idea sharing. Uh, city business item number three, council to consider resolution twenty dash twenty-twenty, the BNSF East contract. Yes, we've had, uh, this, or a variation of it for a few weeks now. This relates to our sewer plant garage. I know it's right here. Um, through the process of, um, getting all our ducks in a row to do that up there at our wastewater treatment facility. getting all our ducks in a row to do that at our wastewater treatment facility. Our Silwest discovered that part of the property that you drive on to get that to the sewer plant belongs to BNSF. It's this little outcropping of property. You've seen it in the contract. And our, our utility pipes run under the ground, right? And so the proper procedure was to reach out to BNSF and say, is this okay? And of course they said, sure, with the lease. And so this contract is with BNSF to do the twenty, twenty years, twenty-five years?
Twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five years, twenty-five year lease. And it was, what was the final?
Three thousand something, thirty-five?
Thirty plus twelve hundred. Yeah, I, I have it here. I don't have it memorized, but um, so for a twenty-five year lease, it was a one-time, one-time lease, twenty-five year lease.
We just want to have that only for the water line. We want another contract for the sewer.
Right, that's the water line, not the sewer line.
So we're doing this tight, it's covered with this, uh, grant.
Right, these will be billed, these will be billed to the, to the grant. Which is also part, part well, part grant, part loan. So again, the city does have to pay half of it back, but still pretty good, pretty good deal for twenty-five years. I don't know about you, but in five years, I probably won't be worrying about it too much.
I know I won't.
And so.
Well, it's not like we have a choice.
We don't have a choice. The other alternative that we did throw around was purchasing that section of property. I've heard through the grapevine that the railroad doesn't like to sell its property. And so, and then also if you, for those that were around when city purchased the property at Warden Park. The amount that was between, there was historical requirements, we need to have historical studies, there was environmental studies. It just added up and added up and added up. So purchasing the property on behalf of government is very lengthy and time-consuming process. And of course, in the end, it would have cost us a lot more than.
Okay.
Two thousand dollars.
You lost me. There's the Warden Park property, which.
Warden Park, the park that Trips sold us three, four years ago.
That lot next to the park.
Right now, yeah, it was, it's.
So we had to go through all of that.
For that little chunk of ground, yes. Yeah, it's, it was thousands of dollars. So that said, we felt that this option, the lease, twenty-five year lease for, you know, in the end, it's gonna cost city a couple thousand dollars. Was a pretty good, was a pretty plan. So there's the background for the reason of this lease and its contract. The council would need to approve it so that I could sign it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution twenty dash twenty twenty.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve resolution twenty twenty, twenty dash twenty twenty to the BNSF lease contract. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, city business number four, council to consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty, the park board assignments. As you remember, I announced that in a previous meeting that Elena Knight did resign. And we do have a interest party, an interested party. Anita Keen, Keen is interested in being on the park, the park board. Uh, which is very exciting. She's an active member in the community with the Lions Club and, and we would love to have her on board. She does live outside the city limits, but she lives within three miles, which is allowed for both the park board and the planning committee. Um, and we do have currently two openings on the park board, so we still have one opening left even after she is approved. So once again, this is the first time, well, outside of the original time, this is now, I guess, the second time that we've approved appointments through resolution. This is kind of new for the city. It's doing it through a, here's a letter from mayor. Say yes, we're going through resolutions, so we can track it. Also on your resolution, you can see the term dates that we're going to be, that we're using. And so that's easy to see too. So it's a very nice way of tracking appointments.
I'm going to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty park board appointment.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty for the park board appointments. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovelady. Any other discussion?
Well, I'm trying to say this. I probably am gonna make some people upset, but I don't have any. It's just more natural. I mean, family friend.
Oh.
I'm sure.
Really, the. Well, was that, what I've said before, volunteerism runs in the family. So if one person wants to volunteer, right, it's not surprising that someone else wants to as well. Uh, we do have a first and a second for this resolution. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving resolution twenty-two twenty twenty, the park board assignments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, city business item number five, council to discuss planning committee progress on proposed development regulation changes. So, uh, planning committee has been busy lately and I wanted to present a few things to city council. I sent these out to, to you an email about an hour before the meeting. And so for those that aren't here to have handouts that are online, Randy, Samantha, I, I do apologize. These are in your email and you can take a look at them when you get it. Um, some of the issues that I.
In my box.
Excuse me?
Joe, can you also drop a paper copy of that in my box just so I can review it in paper form?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
So some of the issues that the planning committee is looking at are the minimum lot size regulations, the rear yard setbacks, the commercial mixed-use zone usage, as well as our moratorium on the historical classification for our historic district. And so I wanted to discuss these with the, with the, the city council. So the procedure for development regulation changes, generally speaking, planning committee would work on this stuff. They would, if they decided that, they, they would tell our city planner, our, our city planner would create final documents. The planning committee could hold a public hearing on them. They'd eventually have to go to the state for, for CBA so the state could buy up on it. And then after all that was done, it would come to city council and then city council could vote on it. My worry is that we would do all of that work and we'd bring it before city council and city council would say nah. And, and then all that work will be for nothing. So I wanted to present this information to you tonight. Um, so that you say, yes, we want this, this is going, so that when you do finally see it, it's not a surprise. And you will have had time to give input to the planning committee. So I'd like to start with the minimum lot size regulation. So right now, generally in the, in the city, and these documents that you have are the ones that I created and give to the planning committees. And it's the reference document. And the idea was that this is a problem statement and the planning committee could use that to make an informed decision. So, so right now in the city of Vator, our minimum lot size regulation, regular minimum lot size is nine thousand square foot. So if someone were to subdivide their, a piece of property, they have to be residential property, it would have to be no smaller than nine thousand square feet. And if you see on here, there, under the other cities, you can see that Vator is very large. You see Vator is nine thousand and most of the other neighboring cities are seventy-five hundred square feet or smaller. And the reason why this is a problem, if you were a developer and you wanted to buy a large chunk of property and subdivide it, you'd want to be able to put as many houses in there as possible. And at nine thousand, it makes Vator less attractive than many of the other cities. And so the, the problem was presented to, to the planning committee. And they thought seventy-five hundred square feet would be a, a more reasonable number that would make us competitive with other cities. And if you look at this document in your email, there is also a picture associated with it with some comparisons of actual properties in the city and what that would look like. Maybe you actually, maybe you do have it. It was on the other one. And so that was what the planning committee thought would be more appropriate for, for the city. Seventy-five hundred still leaves a wide area between homes with the side setbacks. So that if you did get a development that came in, you would have the houses squished up. Any, you know, there's a lot of information just in a short amount of time, but give me comments or thoughts on that?
Well, we didn't build the nine thousand four feet until it changed the zoning.
You know, I was trying to figure out when that was. That was a long time ago.
Well, it was back in the, I don't know, had the four, five, six, you know, the end of twenty, that's when it became.
When the housing regulations were.
When it was first put together.
Yeah, we had a problem down on F Street with local. That's, that's how this happened. And Ken did the seventy-five foot thing. I don't know why. He chose that. He had a planning committee then. And I was on the planning committee at that time. So we were trying to trade, change the zoning because down on F Street, they wanted to put in stacked jam apartments down there. And that street already had a problem. They should have put a signal there years ago. And the meal was bad when we lived there back in the nineties and eighties. So anyway, if I keep my, if I stand with seventy-five foot, it was thinking, you know, we could everybody building other or trying to avoid that because they had bought other lots through the community too. And they had every intention of building all of these apartment buildings. And they had a lot of trouble with them and Shelton and a few other cities around, we had a lot of trouble with these guys. And they always pushed even boys and I don't know, were you even involved then, Jason? Like you weren't even coming to meetings at all, so. My local was here and they were.
No, no.
Yeah, well, they used to come in here and spend the day here and take the shoes off and prop it up on the thing. And he was really a nasty guy, really. And so that's how that came about. And I think it was just a stop that.
I believe, I believe they're on the right path. I think seventy-five hundred is still, would still forbid.
Well, I think in today's world and situations. That's what it was before on the basis.
So, um, have any, any, anyone have any input on the middle lot?
I, I personally think I'm, I can't, I can't. So does that mean you can build on a fifty-foot lot, fifty by one-twenty? Is that the seventy-five hundred?
You, you, yeah, well, if you subdivide it down to a lot in that question.
Where's that at?
I don't know.
Background noise.
People I can't deal with. If you have a lot already that's small, it's called a, it's called a legal non-conforming lot. Let's say you had a lot that was six thousand square feet right now.
Wait, why have a lot that's fifty by one-twenty? Is that a non-conforming lot?
So.
No.
Fifty by one-twenty, what's the square footage? Fifty by one-twenty? Do that. So it's six thousand.
Six thousand.
So it's six thousand square foot. So yes, that is. So, but, but it was created before our nine thousand, must have been created before the nine thousand square foot rule. Which means it's a legal, non-conforming lot. You would only need to meet our, the step back requirements to build there. So if you have a fifty by, a fifty-foot lot, you would need to meet our side setbacks and our front setbacks and our, and our rear setbacks. Put your building right in the middle as long as you can meet those setbacks. Ten feet on each side, twenty feet in the front, fifteen in the back. So you can build your building right in the middle of that, yes.
No.
Then go look for thirty-five.
Maybe you like thirty-five.
Yep.
But then we were along. But it could be longer. Um, and we actually had that exact issue back in Pine Court just recently. Um, and the gentleman that was building back there needed a variance because his lot was three feet too narrow to be able to do what he needed to do. So there was a variance process he went through to get, to be able to build three feet closer. So who's able to do that.
And those are lined up.
I thought they were building.
They are. They're real close on Alpine Court. I don't, I don't know.
I didn't know they were building between those two towers down there. I thought, oh my God.
Okay, all right. So minimum lot sizes, we're on the right path. Thank you for that. Um, I'll let, make sure the planning committee knows that. Rear yard setbacks. So this was an issue that we've run into before where we've had folks. Our rear yard setback setback is fifteen feet. So even if your neighbor is built up against an alley or up against the lot because they're building so old. Still stuck with building fifteen feet away. So you can imagine a situation, you can see in the pictures here, this is a great example, right here in Vator, of the, of the beast, the A Street. Between Main and, Main and A, it's an alley between Main and A over there by the, just south of the post office. Where you can see all these homes along, yeah, there. That's the rear yard. The alley, that alley that runs down the middle of the page there is. So you can see that property that's up, up where their garage is five feet away, another one that's eight feet, another one that's fifteen feet, another one that's zero feet away. So for instance, the house on the top right, you know, if they wanted to build right now, they'd be like the fifteen feet, the fifteen foot rule because that's our setback. You know, is that fair? Would that really be what we want? And so to resolve this problem, in our setback requirements for the point of the house, we have some verbiage already and it's listed here. The verbiage is, when at least fifty percent of the lots which front and series are proved with structures and when not all such lots have the minimum front yard required by this section, then any new structure shall have a front yard, yard not less than the average front yard of all such lots. So to summarize, basically you look at your neighbors. You add up what all their, what all the setbacks are of the current existing buildings. You take them and that's your setback. So you can, basically you can build whatever your neighbors are doing. So you don't have to build, build in much fifteen feet away from the alley when they're building is zero.
Right, I think we went over that when, with the, the Smith setback thing.
Right, so this would fix that issue. It would take into account your neighbors, be able to build similar to your neighbors. And you wouldn't be stuck with a requirement that only you are having to adhere to, where your neighbors didn't have to adhere to. And that verbiage is already built into the plan. But right now on our regulation, if all the houses on the front of the street are ten feet away, then you can build your house ten feet away. If all the houses are twenty feet away, you need to be twenty feet away. Yes.
So again.
For minimum.
Right.
Our lot on A Street, because the people across the street are pretty much zero lot line built and then right up to the sidewalk. I could build a building right up to the sidewalk and zero lot line.
On, on if.
If it conforms to that other, other issue on.
If the other, if the other issues, yeah, you could.
That's the commercial one you're talking about.
Right.
Wouldn't you?
Well, commercial is either the door or neither's right on the.
Well, it allows lot line builds, but also residential allows lot line build on the alley. That's in the international building code. So garages.
But our setbacks are different than that.
Right, we go by the international building code.
Well, our, we have our own setbacks. Our setbacks are, are specific to Vator.
I know, but that's the conflict. To me, that's the conflict is you say in your building, um, um, ordinance that we go by the international building code, which allows lot line builds on alleys. That's why my dads and, and the crazy guy on C Street and Victor on B Street That's why my dads and, and the crazy guy on C Street and Victorian on B Street are allowed their garages right on the alley. And that's because it's allowed. And I understand that your specific ordinance is with the international building code, which we're supposed to go by.
Well, it's kind of one of those I E four E except. Well, we can, a city can have.
Right.
A city can be more strict than that. We can, we can make our own, make our own rules. We don't have to stick to the international building code when it comes to that. And it's documented, they don't match the international building code. And that's okay, that, that we do that.
But like, yeah, somewhere allowed, somewhere.
We can make our community specific for the way, the kind of community we want. We want thirty foot before between homes, we can do that even if the international code says you can be closer.
But like you said, somewhere allowed and somewhere.
Right, well, because the nature of the city, right? I mean, we have some garages that are fifty years old and they're right on the alley. Because someone goes to build a new garage, should they have people all the way in the middle of their property or should they want to build similar to the garage like their neighbor has? And so that's, that's what this would allow.
Crazy Todd built this in seventeen and the Victorian built theirs in two thousand eighteen. So those aren't twenty years ago.
I.
You know, but I'm saying.
I don't have everyone's building project memorials.
Oh, you're.
I can. What I can't say is that our regulations say one thing and it doesn't really work for beta. And this would help that situation and make it work better for beta. You like, you like that idea that, that just, that averaging and then you can build some to your neighbors?
I thought we already did something.
Not in the rear, in the front.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we do that in the front, we do not do that in the rear.
Okay.
Anyone have any other, everyone seems to be okay with that? Any other comments on that?
Makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
It makes sense. All right, great, thank you. All right, moving on to the last. Well, there are two things, but we're only going to talk about one tonight. The commercial mixed use zone. So currently in our commercial mixed use zone, it allows both the residential and commercial. Either or, you don't have, you could build just homes, you can build just commercial, or you could build a mixture of the two. The, the, the problem with that is that we have areas in this town where folks or city council has expressed that they would not want residences. For instance, in our, what you would consider our downtown area there near the, the post office. We don't want residences there. We want commercial. And so the idea would be that we would change that classification to make residential a secondary use. So it would make commercial primary with commercial secondary. So if you. Residential secondary. So if you look at the typed page two, all of, once again, I'm sorry, but folks that are online, but this is in your email. All of the black is our current regulations. The red that is slashed out is the, are the things that we'd be getting rid of. So you can see on the very first page, nothing really changed other than we'd be removing some information. On the back page, you see in the very first paragraph in the red, it is not slashed out, it says, "A secondary use is permitted in any commercial district in conjunction with, but not, but subordinate to any of the uses permitted in the other section." And if you go down to the section two there, "No dwelling unit shall be located on the ground floor within the commercial mixed use zone district." Single family, two family and multifamily residences are allowed as a secondary use subject to meeting all other development standards of this title. So basically, what you would be envisioning is that you would have a commercial building sometime in storefront with an apartment above.
And behind. Right, like where Walt and Louis used to live.
Yeah, be as a, as a, as a secondary, as a secondary use. So, and, and so.
No.
Fourth commercial. And with, with optional residence.
But I know where they live.
And so, and that, and that, and this was, this was actually from Gary Cooper, this was Gary's edits to our current code to make that happen. So what does council think about that?
Well, I, okay, I have a question about the note that's hopefully permitted. If you're going to plan a business there, commercial, and you're going to allow single family, two family, multifamily, build an apartment.
Yeah, they would be, they would have to be above a commercial.
Well, it would be above, okay.
You could see, you could see like a, almost keep the condition.
Yes, because I have this nightmare of A Street down here in our downtown, where, you know, you get all those apartments in there.
Right, well, it would have to be commercial on the ground floor with, with residential above.
That's the way.
Optional residential.
Yes, like Gastro, yeah, just like Gastro.
And some windlock, some of the older buildings in Windlock as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Strata Book has.
Oh, historically, on those buildings that we have down there, the business was in front of the ground floor and like the green building, these people talked a couple of times ago, that had an apartment in the back on the ground floor and then it was, it was two story. And then there was an apartment out front above the, where the awning was, remember that? Anyway, so there was a little apartment up front on top and then a bigger apartment in the back. There was a store up front, the library used to be there and, I don't know, a little gift shop was there for a while. So would that be allowed or not?
Well, the way this is written, he has it written so that no dwelling unit shall be located on the ground floor.
At all.
That's, that is how this is written. However, we could, we could do that to sit, to still make it secondary with.
The storefront.
Storefront.
Being in the front.
Maybe we could add like a square footage minimum, like at least fifty percent be commercial.
That it would always be the at least fifty one percent.
Fifty one, at least fifty one percent of the buildings are going to be commercial. So we could add something like that.
Well, isn't this, these have to be at least two story, otherwise.
Or just commercial. Or just commercial.
Single, single story commercial.
Okay, fine.
So the way my house is set up, because I obviously live on A Street.
I wouldn't want that to happen either. Oh, my gosh. Down there.
Sorry, so with the way my house is set up is I have two entrances to my house. We have an entrance to the front, which could be used for commercial. And I have a secondary entrance on the back that still gives me places for residential area in the back that would also lead upstairs. So how would that work? Like, I wouldn't be able to, like, if I were to sell my house, the next person that owns it wouldn't be able to use the downstairs as.
No, we're not talking about current homes.
Right, so.
Okay, thanks. So in the future, if I were to, how would that move that?
Right, it would be.
Okay, so it would only be, so it would almost be grandfathered in, basically.
Come on, before we say that, because if she sells her house, it should be moved into big, big businesses up front or has always been.
Right.
And.
Which, the way it's set up, it even has its own electrical panel in the front where you could make the front an office space or whatever you needed to make it. But it also has downstairs dwellings. So I just don't know how that would work.
Yeah, but that's already.
Yeah, yeah, that would, that would be.
The other would just be.
Oh, I.
Yeah.
As a property, as a property owner down there also, I'd like to put my two cents in on this. Daryl originally, originally set up Samantha's front for his stained glass business. So she has side, you, you have a side entrance, I think, also.
I do, and that's what I'm saying.
Right, right. And so, you know, in order to get everybody down there on the same level where there's commercial out front, for everybody that is coming after you put the ordinance in place, I would think you would want everybody to start falling in line. So if Samantha sells, she needs to tell whoever buys, it's pretty important that you follow the city rules that that little space out front. I mean, this is the regulations you were going to put on the guy that was going to develop.
Well, yes, it's new development.
Right.
It would be the building itself, the structure would need to be built to our current standards. And those would.
Well, there's only two, so what would happen to those two buildings down there, Doug and Samantha's? Forever be residential?
Well, I, I, I have the same concern and let me read what Gary Cooper told me. He said, "If the restriction on the ground floor residential development were applied throughout the entire zoning district, it would not make the existing residences illegal. They would become legal, non-conforming uses. Empty lots would be affected though." That's what he said. I know it's not extremely detailed, but that was.
In other words, it's grandfathered in.
Yeah.
Yeah, legal, non-conforming.
Legal, non-conforming.
Legal, non-conforming, yes.
Will the owners in that area, if you decide to go on any of this information, be notified in writing?
Um, will there have to be public hearings and all of that thing?
Right.
So.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, so developed regulation change, so it has to go to the state, there goes people are hearing, has to be put in the paper and all that stuff.
Consider it non-performing legal thing right now.
It's a big deal. But, but yeah, so basically we can do that. There was a comment earlier that we had, the Strata Book had about making it so perhaps it wasn't just ground floor. Second, second floor residential, maybe lot line residential on the ground floor as long as it was less than fifty percent of the, of the building square footage. Was that some of that?
Of the, of the building or the bottom floor?
Right. Would you want to allow residential on the bottom floor at all? Maybe it was in the rear, less.
I don't see why not with like. But, you know, it's.
Okay. Anyone else?
As long as that storefront is, you know, you know.
The storefront. And then like I was saying, like Judy was saying, as people sell it, we should try to recoup our business district and get it so that it is a business in there. The way Judy was just talking, in fact, like Judy's building is the only building that's not the facade front. It doesn't match what we want down there. And so in the future, they should, this is going to need to be brought up to look like this zone area.
One thing at a time, man.
Yeah, I'm not sure we want to go down that road tonight, Mike.
Yeah, we don't have all night.
Liberty slope, none of us want today.
Hold on.
But yeah, as far as back, back dwelling, you know, we could put in something that the entrance to the downstairs back dwelling would be, have to be in the back or of course, you know, some, stuff parking would be in the back for that too.
That would offer, you know, some flexibility.
All that kind of stuff, yeah.
Structure too, that way.
Well, I still have to ask again. How large are you going to allow these big buildings to be, whatever lot size that is and have multifamily residents there? That's apartment.
Well, if someone had. I mean, what if someone, what if someone bought all of the property? That's a huge section of the property there and built a commercial building and wanted to put.
Twenty five apartments on top of it.
What's the problem with that? What, why don't you like that idea? Because it brings in, go rail A Street, so.
Need a better property manager is what I need.
Well, but the person that puts an apartment or two apartments, you know, that's upstairs. And if there, I mean, you have bad landlords no matter where you're at. But, you know, if you look at commercial buildings downtown Longview, downtown any place, a lot of the upstairs are apartments. And if you have a decent building landlord, then they take care of them. They don't let them be sloped.
Are we going to guarantee we get that from here?
Yeah, I'm going to guarantee that.
Because I will see you down there cleaning up those yards.
Well, they don't have yards because their apartment's upstairs.
But they don't have yards, they'll be down on the ground. Of course, with this floor, it's for most landlords that do not comply. So if you have upstairs, then you have to, you cannot spread out to the street.
One apartment's fine, but you don't want fifteen or two or three, you know? We've had it in the past and that's a problem.
You, you gotta think they're not, they can't put fifteen up there because you're only working with the space.
I'm just saying, it's just a figure of speech.
But.
And we have a three hundred foot height requirement or something.
We actually have a, a max height, a max pulling height in our regulations already. Yeah, it's not, you're not, you're not.
It's not very high.
Sky street.
I couldn't get a cell tower, so I mean, no.
But Castle Rock, the building I'm in goes from the vault, which is on the first street, like Oasis and them. All the way down is one building, almost a whole block. There's a four thousand square foot apartment on top, which is crazy.
Just one apartment?
One apartment, yeah, it's like pinball drills. One apartment, there's actually a roller range, unfortunately, I don't want to score.
Is there really? And they use it?
It's got a swing.
Apparently.
And they roller skate around and around, you know.
It's a personal, it's a personal roller rink.
It's a personal.
Oh, I think.
Yeah, there's two rolls. But anyway, the problem that we need to keep in mind right away is the residential parking in the back during business hours. Right now it's not a issue because there's no businesses, but in the future, we have that problem down in Castle Rock where the people upstairs are parking right in front of the stores and there's no parking for guests. So just to keep that in mind for in the future if we find a.
Our parking is gone now. Off that side of the street.
And that may be, I'm not sure if that'd be part of this or part of a different type of or other codes, I'm not sure.
Well, generally, when you build a commercial building, you have to have so many parking spaces per whatever, per feet or something. So, you know, you'd have to account for that in a commercial building anymore.
Oh, that's good, that's good input, good forethought. And you could build that, if you build that into the requirements for building, that way you'd be sure that was the way to go. Okay, good. Good input. Great. Okay. And the last thing is the historic, the historic district, the moratorium itself and the requirement. Remember, it was, yeah, it's two lines, it said, it's actually crossed out in, in this document on the last page, lines one and two on the bottom, they're crossed out. That was the entirety of our historic district classification, which is not enough. This document, which is in your email, that goes on seven or nine more pages, that talks about the historic classification, the idea for what that would be. I'm not, I didn't print it out, I didn't give it to you. You can read through it, it is long and not easy reading, but it's the idea from our planner, what it would be to expand these two items into some seven page description. That would be, that would be good. So take, take a look at that and we can talk about that. But yeah, it's like faces, the next several pages after this. All right, any other questions about this? Do we beat it? Does that work?
Oh, is he, one more. So is, in this seven pages or whatever you're talking about, is he thinking about getting rid of the facade and that kind of stuff?
No, it expands on it to give clear direction to a builder on what that means. And there are, there are some line drawings that's related with it. It refers to the community action plan and many other things. Definitely take a look at it.
Okay.